Well, it now being two o'clock, I hereby call the July 7th, 2025 Meeting of the Plimpton Board of Selectmen to order. This meeting is being recorded for public viewing by Area 58, and the recording is not considered an official record of the board. The approved minutes of this meeting will be served as the official record of the proceedings. And our first agenda item is the review and adoption of the updated procurement policy retro to June 30th of 2025.
So I submitted to the board for your consideration an update to the town's procurement policy, and the purpose of this was really to better outline what we need a written scope of work for. So the updated policy that's proposed clearly specifies that for construction-type services between $5,000 and $10,000 that are for work on town grounds or in-town buildings, that we have that written scope of work in the file, and it clearly details what work is to be performed for the price that was quoted. Otherwise, there are no other proposed changes. We generally follow the particular Mass General laws that pertain to the projects, and periodically the state updates those requirements in the procurement charts, so they would just be included with the policy and as they may be amended.
All right. Make a motion to adopt the updated procurement policy, latest revision fiscal year 2025, effective June 30th, 2025.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And passes. Our next agenda item will be the Old Townhouse survey and the next steps.
So I reached out to a local surveying company to get an approximate price for surveying the property at the Old Townhouse, putting out visible stakes for the benefit of the abutters, and also to provide the town with a small plan, clearly showing the property boundaries. And that estimate came in at $1,300. And if the board was inclined to consider putting a fence up at the property in the future, I would strongly recommend that we have the survey done. And if we're provided with the plan, then it's something that we'll not have to revisit again in future years if other projects come up, or that sort of thing. I also did reach out to the tree warden to find out about the stumps that were left behind from that tree work that was done. I have not heard back yet. I will reach out again, and depending on what the plans are for that, I will see if they're not going to be ground down, that maybe the Highway Department could assist with pulling those out, just to have it look a little more presentable there.
And for clarification, that was due to the project that was done by the tree warden in taking down, what was, 13 trees that were removed because of any type of damage to either there or the properties who were abutters?
Correct.
As far as any physical damage or anybody that would be injured by those particular trees, and that's the leftover of that project. And this would demarcate the difference between town property and the abutters on the other side.
Correct.
How would this get funded?
So we do have some funding left in an article that was for like survey appraisals, that sort of thing. That would cover the bulk of it. The remainder, we could fund maybe from the town Buildings and Grounds Maintenance Article, the few hundred dollars that it would take to pay the entire invoice.
Is it something that comes from like CPC funding, because it's historical?
Probably not historical preservation, certainly not open space. Because the legislation is so clear on that, I don't think it's a use.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know how it works, so I was asking the question. Perfect, okay.
Yes. Mr. Blumquist?
It was suggested with the long-term plan for that area, will at some point people, as I said, if you can be right down these stumps, they're going to continue to rot. And here, they're putting asphalt on top of it. That's not really their choice. A suggestion. Pulling them up makes us solve the problem. If more work, maybe just pull some through. Is there a planned place, or is it just a fence for coverage now, like we want to create up a design?
It was just general discussion about putting up a fence to clearly delineate the property boundaries.
Nothing but plantings or anything?
No, nothing elaborate at this time.
It's currently those stumps that were left. It's kind of a mess on that side, too, so something kind of has to be done before it isn't, is a no problem. And also, with the stumps rotting into the ground, I can have another problem with that as well. So beyond just even bugs next door to me of older, shall we say, building that's made out of wood. So, right. So that was the idea behind this.
Well, I've heard talk of suggestions to make around an area from, say, the street and into the woods, appropriate growth, such that is an area for planting, would elevate the grade a little bit and give us a little more privacy as well as less mature plants. It'd be something that we don't need. Just a suggestion. And would that be town properties, committee, or highway?
It would, my sort of vision for it would be that it would be under the purview of the Board of Selectmen, and maybe with some assistance from the Highway Department.
All right. Any further discussion? Make a motion to authorize the town administrator to move forward with having a survey done on the property.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So the next agenda is Board of Selectmen appointee to the Old Colony Planning Council, and make a motion to
Here it comes.
Select Nathaniel Sides as the Board of Selectmen appointee to anything related to the Old Colony Planning Council.
Second.
All those in favor?
Wait, hang on a second. No, I just, again, since I'm not familiar with it, I mean, what's involved? What's?
Basically, it's just what goes on within the whole county of Plymouth, and how they generate funds to be able to be distributed to various towns and cities within Plymouth County.
But for like a time commitment standpoint, is it a monthly meeting?
Yeah, basically, it's a monthly meeting, or even bi-monthly meetings sometimes.
Yeah, it's not, it's not something that you would have to participate in every single month.
Okay.
Sometimes they'll have meetings, and if it was something that was of particular interest to you, like they have their board meetings, but then they also have like the Joint Transportation Planning Group. So if we had a project, let's say, on the Transportation Improvement Plan, or the TIP, which is like a regional plan, you might want to participate in one of those from time to time. They also have like a bicycle group that meets to discuss like bike lanes and things like that. So it's not, I wouldn't say that it's a significant time commitment.
I imagine.
And a lot of it's on Zoom.
Doesn't really apply to us.
A lot of it does not apply.
Okay.
Okay.
And a few of them went on Zoom, as I just mentioned, too, so.
They are helpful to us, though. It's more things like the technical assistance that they've helped us out with over the years. Like, they do a lot for us with respect to the Green Communities grant funding. They apply for a grant so that they can assist me with the annual report, and that's what helps keep us eligible to keep applying for the state grants. And we brought in like hundreds of thousands of dollars in Green Communities funding, so that's really worthwhile. And they assisted us with getting our housing production plan updated. So they are a valuable asset, but a lot of it's not super applicable to us, given our size.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Fair enough.
Sometimes they meet at their office in Rockton. It's downtown, and a lot of their meetings are on Zoom.
Aubrey Street, too, Plymouth.
Aubrey Street, Paul.
For the Plymouth County Commission. All right. And next agenda is the
Need to vote on that?
Oh, kind of started it with that.
You already skipped.
All right. So make a motion to select Nathaniel Sides as the Board of Selectmen appointee to anything related to the Old Colony Planning Council.
Second.
And vote?
Sure.
Aye. And now we're on to the backup Board of Selectmen signatory for the warrants. And I will take that on if there's no discussion or otherwise.
Great.
Okay. So I make a motion to select Dana Smith as the backup Board of Selectmen signatory for warrants.
Second.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
It's actually an interesting history lately on where those warrants reside, but as you probably know, they're presently residing just outside of Bree's office, which avoids some issues with keys and access and all of that.
Absolutely. All right. So at this point, we are on to some appointments. First one being Paul Armstrong, the alternate Building Commissioner, Local Inspector, and that will be from today's date of 7/7/2025 to June 30th of 2026. I make a motion to appoint Paul Armstrong as the alternate Building Commissioner, Local Inspector, July 7th, 2025 through June 30th of 2026.
Second.
He beat you to it.
Damn.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry. I've known Paul Armstrong for a very long time. I have kids in class who I teach with. He's a top-notch guy. This guy's level-headed, he's competent, he's been a king's to grow all the time. Good choice. Very good choice.
Excellent. Thank you for your input, Mr. Blumquist. Okay, the next one is for an appointment of Timothy Johnson as a part-time police officer. And just for some clarification, he was actually appointed by us as a full-time officer prior to this, and now has chosen to take a different path in regarding to the school resource program that we have. It was under the understanding that he was going to go full-time to remain in that position, so I don't know if the administrator has any updates on that.
So I believe that the plan is to restore him to part-time status, and then, in the meantime, the police chief is going to work with the union, put together an updated memorandum of understanding to present to this board for ultimately for approval, and that would result in either Officer Johnson and/or another officer teaching the lead program in the schools up to possibly two days per week, and then moving to more of a directed patrol style coverage of the schools so that we have more of a hybrid setup, where it's not taking somebody and just having them sitting at the school exclusively all day long, but they're also responding to calls and out and about in town as well. And it would also enhance several different officers' knowledge of the school building and the staff and everything. So more of a hybrid approach, I think, is what's on the table. But it will have to come before this board if we're going to revisit the MOU.
So he's in the process of actually creating that with the
Correct.
Because originally, this was, to a certain extent, voted in by the town as a full-time position.
Correct.
As a separate line item, and also as an article on our town warrant and so forth, so.
But it's shared, right, between two people now?
So it was shared this past school year, and then towards the end of the school year, one of the people took some leave. They were out, so it was pretty much exclusively Officer Johnson at the school.
Okay.
He was offered the full-time role, and then, for personal reasons, he declined that appointment, and he wants to stay on part-time. The little hiccup in everything is that the, the union contract, it involves like, it's supposed to be a full-time officer. And so that's why he was appointed, and that was the understanding when he was working those hours at the school. So if he's only going to remain part-time, we need to go back to the drawing board and come up with another option.
Basically rewrite the job description?
Exactly. Rewrite the MOU for the School Resource Officer position.
Okay. But he's still interested in serving as that person?
He is, but where he's only a part-time officer, the union does have some standing in that, that they get to be part of that, if they're going to waive the fact that he's not a full-time officer.
And that's due to the contract, correct?
Yes.
Because in the contract, it says that it is a full-time position.
Right.
And again, that's what the town voted for, was a full-time position. So this would be the second officer that actually turned down an appointment for a full-time position, too, because we had that other officer before that we appointed that immediately rescinded. So I just want to make sure everybody is aware of that. So as long as we have an actual plan going forward, that'll be submitted to us by, by Matt?
Yes.
And he's working on that currently?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. I believe he met with the union earlier today to get that conversation rolling and figure that out.
Any other discussion, gentlemen?
No more discussion.
Okay, make a motion to reappoint Timothy Johnson as a part-time officer from July 1st of 2025 through June 30th of 2026.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, warrants paid.
If we could please hold that item until the next meeting, and then Bridgette can get us the updated amount.
Okay. And town administrators' updates and correspondence?
As far as updates are concerned, I have been working with the town accountant on closing out fiscal year '25. We're currently working on the line-to-line transfers that are going to be needed to balance everything out. People still have until July 15th to pay invoices that were issued for last fiscal year, so we're not quite ready to go on that, but we should be soon. And by your next meeting in August, we'll have all of that to you for your review and approval. We are also working on setting up all of the grant accounts and the articles for fiscal '26. That takes a little bit more time, because you have to see what was, if there are any last-minute things being paid from the fiscal '25 ones and moving those over. Also relatedly, we signed the letter of engagement with the auditor. So the auditor is already in the process of gathering some preliminary information from fiscal '25, and they're aiming to start their process by early September. That's typically what the goal is, is to get everything moving forward around that timeframe. I'm going to be meeting with the Finance Committee, and they will be coming up with a recommendation to fill the vacant seat, and I will have that name to you for your next meeting for consideration and potential approval.
When's the meeting?
Tonight.
Oh. Guess I gotta type up those minutes, then.
I have a meeting with our internal financial team regarding setting our bond rating with S&amp;P, so more to come on that. They've been gathering all of the standard information, and we've been responding to questions accordingly. So I don't foresee anything too unexpected with that, but that's happening. Dana and I are going to be convening a meeting with the postmaster to discuss some mail issues and things that have been brought to our attention for quite some time now. There have been some issues. There's also been more changeover at the post office, so the new gentleman is willing to meet with us, so we expect to get that scheduled sometime this month. The Rock Regional Old Colony Communication Center just let us know today that they received a grant that will help update our fire and police radios, so that's a huge win for us. Radios are very expensive, and The Rock went out of their way to apply for some additional grant funding for us.
Are those the digital radios that'll actually allow police and fire to communicate?
So that they can communicate.
Excellent, very good.
Yes.
Because that's been a problem for a long time, so that's excellent.
Yeah, The Rock has done a lot for us recently as far as like fulfilling some promises that were made, even going back to some like quite some time ago. So that's going well, and they did return to us the fully executed agreement with them for the next three years. I got that back today, too, so that's fully executed. I'm starting work on the MBTA, the zoning that we approved at town meeting. There's a whole application process for that that we need to complete by the end of this calendar year, so I started work on that today, and I'll keep you updated if anything comes from that. But we already voted it, so I don't foresee anything.
Right.
But they've been helpful from SERPED, different regional planning agency than Old Colony, which we customarily belong to, but SERPED actually provided us with the technical assistance for that zoning, and they've been helpful in kind of walking me through, there's a lot of steps, it seems, to
Right.
Nothing's easy. I'm also starting work on the Community Compact Grant that we got for the internal permitting software. I was waiting on that to make sure that Town Meeting approved the MBTA zoning, because we would not have been eligible to actually act on the grant if that wasn't approved at Town Meeting. And then somewhat relatedly, I've been working with Brian Vazza, our Conservation Agent. He also helps us out with a lot of the website stuff. Civic CMS, which is our web platform, they're still kind of in process with upgrading all the cities and towns' websites to be in compliance with ADA requirements. So we're going to get some upgrades for no additional cost. And then, once that's complete, Brian's already working on getting updated pricing from them of the different options and packages available to us. So then I'll bring that to the board for review, and we can see where we want to go with that. We have received some criticism about our website. I think the biggest issue with it, it looks fine if you access it from a desktop computer, but when you're on your phone, which I feel is like a lot of people access from their phone, it brings up like an abbreviated menu, and I think that that gets some people hung up, like they can't easily see like the contact information for the different offices. So some of that definitely needs to be reworked, at least the mobile portion of it. Maybe make it more user-friendly for mobile users. And then we're also going to be adding the Police Department onto our website to have some cost savings, and it seems like that's going to just work much better overall. So the people providing the tech services for the Police Department, who also work well and kind of in tandem with The Rock, they think that it's a good idea as well. But we wanted to do the ADA stuff first and kind of get that taken care of.
There's a few towns that actually do that, where they actually have it as part of the town website, is the link right to the Police Department, so that's actually part of that. So as you go on to, I think Lakeville's one of them that actually has that. As soon as you go on Lakeville, the town website is also a police website as well, so.
And then we have, as far as correspondence, I received a letter from Mass DOT alerting us that they are going to be upgrading all of their pavement markings at railroad crossings for the commuter rail network. They did want to coordinate with the Highway Department as far as any paving projects and things like that, so I forwarded this to Rob Furlot for anything additional that might need to be done. And one final update, the generator at the Highway Department failed. It was very old, not unexpected. We've identified some funding sources, and Colleen Moran was able to solicit written quotes. That's the protocol, given like the price range that we're in. So it looks like they're going to move forward with South Shore Generator, is going to basically replace it with a similar generator to what they have now, a little more powerful, so that everything is powered up, because I mean, that's, that's their whole hub.
Right.
It was bordering on an emergency situation, but we did, we did not treat it like an emergency procurement. We had Colleen go out and solicit the necessary quotes for that supply, but it looks like they're going to be moving forward with that. Time is of the essence, because if there's a windstorm or something combination at this juncture of ARPA and Town Building Maintenance. It depends, too, on when the invoice gets issued, because they do have a little bit remaining in their, one of their budget lines, so we might be able to offset with that.
Is that same company able to provide servicing for the said generator as well?
They can, and we do, we have another provider right now who's servicing the other generators. Bree had obtained pricing on that, but I'm assuming that them, where it's a new one that'll be going in, and it'll have some sort of warranty.
Sort of warranty, right.
I would think that we would just want them to, to service it, but we'll have to get quotes and look at all that.
And one follow-up on something that you and I have been working on, actually since I first got in, as far as getting things videoed, how are we looking as far as all the committees and so forth getting videoed? I know Area 58's been a great supporter on this and has been very helpful and very accommodating for everybody, but I'm just curious on how, if we have all of these meetings being videoed?
Yes. So everybody, for the most part, was cooperative, like those additional boards. Board of Health is going to cooperate. It was a little up in the air. I think that Area 58 showed up to one of their meetings, and somebody got their wires crossed, but they're going to be doing that. They're going to be adding the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is important, because we have that 40B application that's pending. So Ethan Stiles has been in direct contact with Rich Gulat from Area 58. Anne Sobolowsky from the Planning Board has been in touch with her whole meeting schedule, very cooperative. And Town Properties Committee has also been added to that list. They haven't met since we got them like added to the list, but they know that they need to reach out to Area 58 with that meeting schedule. So a lot more transparency for the residents and trying to get this out there.
As we've discussed a number of times, I mean, the accessibility to town government is a very important part, and having the ability to watch these meetings at any time. I'll say it again, because I've said it before, but if you ever want to, you know, you're having a hard time going to sleep, you can always watch this meeting. But overall, I'm encouraged to see that this is actually happening, and we have a good resource with Area 58 and a great relationship with them, to be able to video these meetings so that people can watch it at their leisure and be able to rewind it and so forth. Obviously, we definitely encourage people to attend these meetings. We have two town residents today, but we're going to give kudos, right? We have two town residents today, but we're going to give kudos, right? So I think it is a very vitally important thing to go and kind of piggyback on what Liz had said about the website as well. The more accessibility, the more ease of accessibility for people to be able to be involved is important. Obviously, if you want your voice to be heard, that would be an in-person meeting or something like today and so forth, so. However, the mere aspect of it being on video for all of these boards to be able to be seen, to be talked about, and get it out there, because a lot of people are working two and three jobs, and they don't have the time to, no matter what time we make a meeting, to be able to attend. And I think it's unfair with our modern technology that we don't provide this, and I'm very encouraged and happy that we're seeing that this is getting the ball rolling and we're actually getting it out there, so. And thank you for all your work on it too, Liz.
Oh, you're welcome.
I might mention on that, no, it's not on the agenda, we won't deliberate, but the governing body of Area 58 is a board of directors. Each town has certain representatives. Plimpton has two. I've been serving as the only one for many years, so we are going to need someone else to come forward, and I think probably my seat will probably become vacant and need to fill too, so. Totally agree with you on the transparency that comes and the important service that they serve. It's a very congenial board of directors, and if there's anyone out there interested in this, it's a nice entree into, it's a nice entree into civic service.
Second.
I agree with you, Dan. I think transparency is so important. I think everybody being involved is a wonderful idea. Does that mean that anybody who's going to be on here, Area 58, Board of Health, people that can meet here?
No.
They can meet other places.
Area 58 does have a mobile setup. That said, if this room is available, we would strongly encourage people to utilize this, because we have the PA system now, thanks to our chairman, and it's just easier for Area 58. They have their whole setup here. So that's the preference, but it's not specifically necessary.
Mr. Blumquist?
I don't see any projected meetings for the summer here. Are they just off in the season?
They're, they were kind of in a holding pattern, pending a report that we're expecting from the state regarding the condition of the current fire station.
No meeting yet for the...
No, no, not right now. There is work ongoing right now on the public water supply project, but nothing that's created a need for them to convene a meeting.
I just want to say that, and also with respect to actually seeing money and efforts and property, I think the library project, have you all back? Has that been awarded? Or is that still being bid?
They, oh, they haven't, it hasn't gone out for bid yet. I actually have a meeting with Mike Slossin later this week to talk about that process with him.
So that's still in the works?
That's still in the works.
All right. Any further discussion, anything? Mr. Blumquist?
You mentioned that the local agency was chosen to survey the property for the award.
It was Grady was the one that I reached out to for the price. Grady?
Yeah.
Minutes from the June 9th, 2025? Nothing yet.
Looked good to me.
I wrote them, looked good to me.
Motion to approve the minutes from June 9th of 2025?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, with no further business or discussion with the board?
There is a dates-to-remember thing, and we were set for August 18th at 2:00 PM. I, just before this meeting, I was informed about a meeting that I'm going to have to attend at 3:00 PM. I totally prioritize these meetings, but either I'll have to leave before 3:00 PM or if it were possible to start earlier.
You had said the 11th didn't work well, right? Because I'm just wondering, it might be better if you could meet sometime the week of August 11th, even if it's not on the Monday, because we're going to have those line-to-line transfers, and I just don't want that to hang out there too long as far as like closing off.
I guess I am now available on the 11th, or if need be, could make my, well, it's tricky. If you want, I can make myself available.
Or is the 18th better, earlier in the day?
Earlier in the day on the 18th would be better.
Okay.
Would be best.
I mean, it's up to...
I'm fine with it. Yeah, I'm good.
So we can do 1 o'clock in the 18th?
Would be great. Okay. Sorry to do that.
Nope.
This is a high priority, but every once in a while, an even higher priority comes up.
Life intrudes.
That's it.
No, no problem.
So, August 18th of 2025. And that would be at 1:00 PM. Just to clarify, that would be moving our next meeting to August 18th, and that will be at 1:00 PM as opposed to 2:00 PM.
Are you serving lunch?
So with no other discussion or other further agenda items, I make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Just if I might, I'm not particularly speaking, advocating for it, but a rave's something that we're feeling less interested in these days.
That's up to you, if you'd like to make a rave.
I am. I will make this rave.
Okay, fair enough.
I mean, it will be the decision of the board whether that's a tradition that continues or not. So my rave is actually for the summer schedule and for kind of the workload in the summer, that things rightly slow down a little, a really good time to not only continue putting out the fires that seem to be a major part of our work, but to kind of proactively look forward to kind of prioritize the projects for the year. And a really good time, I think, to choose two or three projects out of the many calling for attention so that each of us can focus on that a little bit. Former selectman reminded me when I first started that there's always too much to do, there's no way to do it all, and an important piece is to find the thing that one resonates with. So my rave is for a summer schedule where we continue to do the work between meetings, but also have the opportunity to kind of proactively prioritize and choose projects we want to work on in the coming year.
All right. Thank you. Nathaniel Sides?
Well, I rave is not the, I have a comment that I would like to offer. You know, I know that the town experienced a fatality recently, unfortunate loss of a young man's life, and I think we all grieve with the family and support them in our own way, but I also would like to make sure that we remember the first responders as part of that process, because they can be affected by responding to such a call as well, and I think it's important for us to keep them in our thoughts as they work through their feelings in the aftermath of responding to a fatality as well, so I would like to offer that up.
Once again, make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.